This evening with an invocation by Pastor Paul Monson of the St. Augustine Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all join me in standing. Pastor, welcome.
Let us pray. I pray, Lord, for all these people on City Council and for all of us as citizens that we would learn the power of words. For when we use the wrong words, we bring needless division. When we use the right words, we bring peace and unity. As a wise politician by the name of Solomon said, "A harsh word stirs up anger, but a gentle answer turns away wrath." So let us join in in praying with another politician by the name of David. "May the words of our mouth and the meditations of our heart be pleasing in your sight, O Lord, our rock and our redeemer." So I pray, Lord, for all of us that we choose our words very carefully, that we will not slander one another or disrespect one another, but we be gentle and loving and peaceful. In Jesus' name I ask it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor. The April 16th, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
Forum present. We have a City of Troy proclamation this evening for building safety. I'm going to defer reading the proclamation. You can all see it on the city website, but I would like to invite Mr. Stephen Burns to the podium to offer a few words towards building safety rules.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for recognizing Building Safety Month and the important work that building inspectors and fire inspectors do on a daily basis to ensure that buildings are safe and are ensuring the public health, safety, and welfare. During the month of May, all over the country, people who recognize ICC standards for codes throughout the country and even the world recognize the month of May as Building Safety Month. At the City of Troy Building Department, we will have some additional handouts and guides and tips for safety for your home or business, as well as a poster posted down there. It's very simple, and we just offer many tips on how you can make your home or be prepared for certain safety situations. Thank you for your time, and thank you again for recognizing Building Safety Month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no carryover items, so we'll move to a public hearing that we have on the schedule for reprogramming Community Development Block Grant Program for the years 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2011 funds. Mr. Zerleg, do we have a speaker?
Yes, we do. Either Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, or Tim Richnack, our Public Works Director, will give a small presentation. There we go. I was sweating both myself.
Good evening.
Good evening. Community Development Block Grant Funds come to us annually or have. Those funds have been slowly diminishing over the years, and basically, we can build them up over a number of years to use for larger projects. We use a good percentage of it, 30% or 40% for a home chore. The rest of it has to be used for projects, and this reprogramming is part of the requirements to have a public hearing, and so we're going to put that all together in order to have a storm sewer project in Section 36. That's the basics of it.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I believe that there's a certain section within Section 36 that qualifies for Community Development Block Grant improvements, because there's only that section that has an adequate number of low and moderate income families. Is that correct?
Yes, that residential area that's within 36, which is very limited. The rest of it is commercial properties.
Mr. Miller, did you want to say anything?
That's exactly what I wanted to say.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions from the Council? Councilman Teetz?
For the public's sake, could you tell us where Section 36 is?
Oh, basically, that is the southern-eastern most square mile. It's Dequender, 14 Mile, 15 Mile, and John R. It's that one square mile. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the audience like to speak on this issue? Public hearing is now closed. We'll now return the item to the council table for resolution. Would someone like to read the resolution, please? Councilman Fleming?
We're at the City Council of the City of Troy. After conclusion of a public hearing on this date, April 16th, 2012, has determined that program year 2008, unexpendated funds of $29,993.30 from public services, parentheses, yard services; program year 2009, unexpendated funds of $50,388 from public services, again, parentheses, yard services; program year 2009, unexpendated funds of $67,609.54 from Parks Recreational Program Year 2010, unexpendated funds of $52,191 from public services, parentheses, yard services; program year 2011, unexpendated funds of $61,985 from Parks Recreational, total of $262,166.84 should all be reprogrammed to the Flood Drain Improvements Project, Levington Street from Minnesota to Dequender, in Section 36. Be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes city administration to reprogram funds from program years 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2011 to the Flood Drain Improvement Project, Levington Street from Minnesota to Dequnder, in Section 36. This project will be completed before the end of 2012.
May I have a second?
Second.
Council's leader. Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Slater. A discussion, please. Councilman Henderson, were your questions answered to your satisfaction?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Would you like to discuss any of the issues that you had?
No, there were plenty of them, but he answered them.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now proceed to public comments. The audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to the council rather than city administration or to the audience. Also, there's a timer on the city council table in front of the mayor's chair that turns yellow when one minute of speaker time remains and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting move more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. One of the themes for the month of April is volunteerism. There are a number of people who are coming in from the community who are going to speak during public comments to talk about the various volunteer organizations that they're involved with. I hope you enjoy these mini presentations, and you might consider joining some of these great efforts to help others. First, we have ladies from the Build On organization, Jennifer Liu and Kelly Thing, if you'd like to come to the podium, please. Good evening.
Good evening. First and foremost, we would like to thank all of you for this unique opportunity. I am Kelly. And I'm Jennifer. And we are from the Troy High Build On. Just to give you an overall idea, our organization helps build schools in developing countries. So far, we have built about 440 schools in nine developing countries. The two main aspects of our club include service and fundraising. As Kelly mentioned, we build schools, so that's our fundraising aspect. It is a major part of our club. This year, our school club alone raised over $5,000, and this summer, we are sending nine students to Haiti from Troy High School to build a school there. In addition, our second aspect is service-based, and we do a lot of volunteering in our local community, not just in the Troy area, also in our other sister cities, including Pontiac and inner-city Detroit. And we just wanted to connect it to April's month of volunteerism, so we just wanted to thank the whole city of Troy for giving us all these opportunities and really making us aware that Build On is a great organization. That's part of Troy. Our club like ours could not exist without the support of not only our school, but also the city of Troy as a whole. So, thank you all.
Thank you so much. The next person that signed up is Brian Kizler Keeler, I'm sorry, Mr. Keeler, from Huntington Bank.
Good evening. I was asked today to share what Huntington's doing in the community to volunteer and help make a difference where we live and we serve here. In 2011, we volunteered just over 2,000 hours throughout East Michigan here, and a lot of the key focuses for us is around affordable housing, financial education, when it comes to both the consumer and also the small business owner. What we look at on the affordable housing initiatives that we're doing, we partner a lot with OLSA, Lighthouse, and also various nonprofits throughout the community to teach on the different programs that are servicing the rural residents who might be a little harder hit or struggling to pay their mortgages as well. We also have a need program out there to help a small business education as well. The NS Share League are Lemonade Day, so each of you have a candy in front of you. We partnered actually with Art Van to bring this to East Michigan community. So throughout the 17 Art Vans and a variety of community partners, you can pick up your packet. But the whole purpose of the idea is to teach the entrepreneur mindset to the youth of today and hopefully our future business leaders of tomorrow. It teaches them the importance of building a business plan, going out trying to recruit investors. Obviously, maybe your parents or something to invest, so you can create this business, soliciting your business, and then at the end of the day, you have to pay back your investors. You have to save a little bit, spend a little bit on yourself, and get back to the community as well. It's a great program. Last year, they actually, throughout the whole organization, about 17 states, just over about $2 million were given back to nonprofits throughout the 17 states that did it. So it's a great program. So we just want to share some of those ideas with you that we're doing. And if there's any questions or anything, if not, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next person that signed up is Ashley Byrd. Ashley?
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank you for having me here today and for giving me the opportunity to speak about my volunteer work. I'm here to inform the community about pro-life activism and volunteer opportunities. I am here, I would say I'm here on behalf of a certain organization, but I think it's more appropriate to say that I'm here on behalf of the unborn children and their desperate mothers and fathers. I've been involved with numerous pro-life organizations. To give you some background information regarding my experience, I've attended conferences, prayer meetings, and I'm often a guest speaker, and I speak to young women about purity and living a conservative lifestyle. I was recruited by Dr. Monica Miller, who was deeply involved in pro-life activism since around the 80s. She's a professor of theology at Madonna, and about half of the graphic images of abortion founded online belong to Monica Miller. For a year, I was a Bound for Life chapter leader. Bound for Life is a charismatic Christian organization who holds silent prayer meetings outside of local abortion mills. Bound for Life takes place across the world now and was founded in the United States. I've participated in local 40 Days for Life campaigns as a prayer lawyer. 40 Days for Life consists of 40 days of prayer, fasting, and often includes candlelight vigils outside of abortion mills. What I really want to talk to you about is sidewalk counseling. What I believe sidewalk counseling is the most effective and powerful way to end abortion. When you think of an extreme pro-life activist or a sidewalk counselor, you probably picture that hostile person who's out there condemning, screaming at people, and telling them that they're going to hell for choosing abortion. What sidewalk counseling is meant to be is just the opposite, and those people are making us all look very bad. I'm here to tell you that sidewalk counseling is meant to be a very peaceful event led by individuals who are there to encourage rather than condemn abortion-minded women and men, and offer them realistic opportunities to choose life for their unborn child. I do sidewalk counseling with an organization called Guadalupe Partners, which is actually led by Edmund Miller, who is Dr. Monica Miller's husband. Our mission is to assist abortion-minded women to make life-affirming choices for themselves, their unborn children, and their communities, so that we can have more active families who are successful and who are educated. We offer unquestioning material aid to mothers, which includes help with utility bills, rent, diapers, groceries, anything that they feel they're desperate for. We assist them as long as they're helping to assist themselves. We have no office, no employees, and no formal structure, but we have been extremely successful in helping women overcome the temptation of the quick fix that the abortion industry pushes. I'm not sure why it hasn't been thought of before, but I think that combining the ideas of each of these organizations I've mentioned would be the most effective. My friend Tara and I are in the process of creating our ministry called Life Unbound, which will hold prayer meetings, but not silent, as Bound for Life does, in combination with sidewalk counseling, fasting, and prayer. I plan on making my local community my primary area of concern, which is why I'm here today. As you know, Troy is a wonderful city and lacks any abortion mills. The Women's Center that was once located in Big Beaver has moved to West Bloomfield. Although our city doesn't have any mills, there are plenty around us. Sterling Heights, Southfield, West Bloomfield, Warren, and Detroit all have major abortion mills with an extreme amount of traffic. Planned Parenthood just opened two new centers in Flendale and in Auburn Hills. We need help in all forms: baby items, more sidewalk counselors, more people to teach purity to our youth, and more importantly, we need your prayers. Guadalupe Partners has a binder full of mothers' names listed with their needs, and we hope to be able to continue helping them as much as we possibly can. If you cannot be on the front lines, please pray. If you want to become involved or hear some of our success stories, you can email me at ci5251@win.edu or google guadalupepartners.org. At guadalupepartners.org, you can make donations, and you can look at our monthly newsletters, which have very successful stories about the mothers that we help. As sidewalk counselors, we aren't there just to get them to choose life for their unborn baby. We are there long-term. We have had many families for many years. I'd like to thank you for your time, and again, if you'd like to help, the most important thing you can do is your prayers, but anything is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Next is Diane Alf.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Diane Alf, resident of Troy for 13 years. We chose to move to Troy because it's excellent, because of its excellent track record of being a diverse, well-run, financially responsible, business-friendly city. And Mayor, look what you have done in less than six months. You ruined our reputation, and you ran off our very competent city manager. Our son is a staff sergeant in the United States Marine Corps. He called me and asked me, "Mother, what is going on in the city of Troy, the best well-run city in the state of Michigan?" He heard about the follies of our mayor on his base. He is stationed at Camp Pendleton in California. His buddies are making jokes about the city of Troy, Michigan now, and its mayor. Our daughter, who lives near Champaign, Illinois, called me and asked me, "Mother, what's up with all the craziness going on in Troy? Troy has been on the local news several times." She told me, "Mother, it's time to get involved. Bottom line, that mayor has got to go." Mr. Zerleg, my whole family is very saddened at the news. You might take a job in Florida. We are happy for you that you will be able to work with a city council and a mayor that holds you in highest regard. You have conducted yourself with class and grace, as you withstood unwarranted attacks by our mayor. Thank you for everything you did for the city of Troy. Your professionalism and good character will be sorely missed. God bless you and your family. I hope the city of Troy is done losing fine, competent professionals. We have lost too many. So, it's time to take a stand. My husband and I support the recall of Mayor Janus Daniels, and we'll put our best efforts toward that end. Thank you, and God bless and save the city of Troy, Michigan.
Thank you. James Savage? Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of City Council, somebody left something.
Oh, that's a proclamation.
Oh, okay. Okay. Last November, the people of Troy voted to elect their representatives to City Council. The result is, we have this democratically elected council that has a very difficult job to do. Our democratic form of government is not perfect, but it's the best one we have. And if people decide to abide by the rules, only when it suits them, that will eventually undermine and erode the system. I did not vote for every council member here, and I may not support your position on every issue, but I will not support the petition to recall the mayor, and I will not support the petition to recall three council members. And I call upon the organizations of both of these petitions to consider the well-being of our city ahead of any personal animosity you may have, and withdraw your petitions. Over the years, the voters of Troy have always made the right decisions, as they did with the convention center, the I-75 interchange, property tax increase, and the library, et cetera, et cetera. And they will not take kindly to being told, "You've got it all wrong." Members of council, in the next few weeks and months, you have some very important issues you have to deal with. You don't have a choice. The budget, the replacement for a city manager, the future of the DDA, just to name a few. We have a divided community, and for many years, we have had a divided council. You cannot do your job effectively while you are looking over your shoulder to see who is attacking you. We have to deal with this division. Tonight, as a group, you should pass a resolution, although purely symbolic, that you do not support these recall petitions. You may be working together for many years. Now is the time for council to take the lead in building a community that we want. We need leadership. We have seven people on this council. They have to work together. You have no choice. Maybe tonight, you can stand up and say, "We are united. We are going to work together and get this job done." Okay. Usually, around this time, I announce the Senior Zitism Club, which I will be hosting on Thursday at the Troy High School. It's a yearly event. And, you know, I'm going to go out on a limb and suggest that you all come. Now, you know, you've got a few years before your senior zitters. And so I admit, but you know what? If you were to just sit down together and talk about sports, talk about your families, talk about music, talk about anything but politics, you might find you have a lot more in common than you have that separates you. And I have found in all the years that this has always been the case. When I talk to people, I start talking about the things that we have in common, and it goes on and on, and then I say, "Well, how come we have different political views?" And this may be a good opportunity. I haven't announced this at the school, but I'm sure I can get you in, even if you're not senior. It would be a good opportunity for you to sit down and just enjoy the evening, talk about whatever, except no politics. With that in mind, I'm going to pass these over to Clark to maybe...
Pass them on to the council?
I wish you well, and I hope tonight is the start of a new beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Kumar Valanudi? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk in front of the council members. I'm actually from a Troy Telugu Association. It is a nonprofit organization. This is started in 2005. It started with the small employee groups, and then it evolved into members, a lot of members that joined into this group, and then we have given it a name called Troy Telugu Association. Telugu is basically, you know, it's an Indian language, and we have a lot of people in Troy who are from India, and we have members that participate in this. It is not only limited to Telugu people, but anyone who is interested in participating in our programs are most welcome to do this. At the same time, I would want to just tell what our principles are, what's the basic motto of this organization is. The principle of this organization is to help. That is humanity, edification, longevity, and people, keeping people always in mind. What we can do and how we can help is what we are based on. And basic belief in this organization is the people network. Network is very important. If one person needs help, if you don't have a network, we cannot reach to him. But we always try to be proactive and find out who needs help and how we can do our best and in our, within our reach. That's key. Members, everyone in the community is a member for this organization. There's no age limits or anything. Anyone can join in this community. And activities are, basically, we do help financially to the people who needs money, monetarily, or any way so to perform. And then we conduct a lot of cultural activities in the Troy to share or to pass on to our next generation, explaining about all the cultural activities, all the cultures that we have here back in India, so that people can keep in touch with their backgrounds, too. too. And then we collaborate with various nonprofit organizations in states and in nations too, so that if any other volunteer organization needs help, we collaborate with them and we help them. Same way, if we need help, we go out and reach to the people for the help. Then also, we keep a burst of news that is connected to the community, to the individuals or to the families. So we communicate through emails with all the happenings that are happening in Troy or anywhere else in state which is very related to individuals up in Troy. We also offer free seminars for the individuals and the families that are needed for life insurances problem or estate management, or how to manage your bank accounts, budgets, and so on, so forth. We have several individuals who perform these seminars for free for these voluntary organizations. We basically conduct in Troy community centers as a needed basis. Okay. One thing I forgot to tell this member of, in this Troy Telugu Association, we have around thousand members, roughly around five hundred families. So every gathering, we have not less than five hundred people. And also, we, we take next step here, we provide help back in, back in the home, the families' needs. Let's say, for example, here, something happened, unduly passed away, or accident, something happens, we help the families back in India, so that everything can be done appropriately, because they have no one here to help. So that's why we stand behind those people to help them move forward. And promoting various programs for the organization which supports physically-challenged individuals. Whoever is physically challenged, we help them, we promote the programs for them, we do fundraisings for those physically-challenged organizations. And donating for the wish list for the Christmas, during Christmas, we collect the wish list from various organizations, and we fulfill those wish lists too. And presently, I would like to say, Nandikshur, who's here, and his wife, they are the current president of our organization. He leads the whole organization for 2012. We are also conducting a big, massive cultural program on April 28th in Athens High School. We would like to invite every one of you to attend the program, please. We have invitations, also, we'll pass it on at the end of this meeting. What we want to do is, future of going forward is, we want to continue to support the community by all means, whatever we, so we can perform. Other thing we want to do is mostly diversification. Just not one community, but whatever we could do in Troy, we will perform all those activities. We also want to be a part of the Troy city and do as required the helps. I really thank you for giving me this opportunity. I have a lot of information to present, but I'm really thankful for the present, for the time that you have given me, and I'll take from there.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ed Neet.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city officials. Ed Neet, twenty-four-year resident. I have to apologize, a few council meetings ago, I kind of had a Joe Wilson moment, and I stood up and said, "I object." A woman referred to this side of the room as everybody there sitting there being filled with hate, and she doesn't know me one bit, so enough of that. Mr. Zerlag, congratulations. I think you have accepted your new appointment. I hope you got the high end of the salary. You're not doing anything than any other federal, state, city employee hasn't done. You're, uh, go for it. You might not like those hot May-through-September summers down there. You might miss our springs and summers and falls and white Christmases up here. Well, good luck to you. You were given a mandate from the former mayor and council to cut everything and preserve core services, and I believe you did that. And if it was your own private company, you might have maybe done it a little different, or a public corporation, but I think you did a good job on doing that, so good luck to you in your endeavor. I have the last couple of meetings, Councilman Dean Slater has brought up the agenda for our Troy police, the budget ending June 30th to July 1st. And I hope we can pursue what he is talking about, restructuring the budget for the coming year that's coming up, the coming budget year. I would hope that the mayor and all council would work to try to preserve the police that we have and add as many more police that we could. I'm not sure exactly where he's going on that, because I did attend the budget meetings last year in their entirety, and basically, we were told that there was really no money there, and the city was in kind of a deficit, a slight deficit, but not a great deficit. So hopefully, any work that could be done in the budget study meetings on that. I'm also wondering if the governor's man, Nate Governor Snyder, with the public school teachers now, with twenty percent having to pay their, and public school employees paying twenty percent of their health care. I'm not sure if our city employees are there, but I'd like to take a look at that in the budget, if they, you know, the council, the mayor, and the city manager could take a look at that. Also, property taxes. I believe eight percent rise in Oakland County last year, and a point-five-five percent raise in Troy. The last three years, my assessments went way down. This one, I just got in March, which I think is for tax revenue next year, my assessable went up ten grand, and my taxable five. So hopefully, Nina LaCarley, the city assessor, could maybe give us some input on increased tax revenues that may be coming in next year. And also, there's the infamous reserve fund, if that's at thirteen million, don't quote me on that, and the fifteen to twenty-two percent reserve. If that could be tapped, I don't know what would be a better reason for tapping that in emergency if we can't keep our police. One of my pet plebes for our police being proactive rather reactive is drunk driving in Troy. Every week, I read the Troy Gazette, Detroit Times, all the people going the wrong way on our city streets, they're two, three times the level. Years ago, we had a member from our church, she was on home, I believe, from college, and she was going westbound on Long Lake, and a woman came onto Charlie's Northfield Bar going a hundred miles an hour and cut the car in half and killed them all instantly. And you're all familiar with the one that happened at twelve in Orchard Lake and Farmington Hill with the man that lost his wife and his two kids, so. As far as I can see, our police are pulling them off the road, and if we go reactive rather than proactive, I'd hate to see another tragedy in Troy for that having. As far as the mayor, the groups that have attacked her in the past, I wish they would cease and desist. I also spoke last week with Council, Councilman Campbell, about his fact that he only won by fifty-seven votes, but only twenty-seven percent of the people voted. Well, that applied to Campbell, Daniels, Henderson, and Teets. If I remember, three years ago, only fifteen percent maybe voted, and Wade, you were telling me they were stealing your signs, and you were going to outsource the police department to Oakland County Sheriff. You were all on your elections, you were all duly elected, you were all duly sworn, and you're all good, honest people, I trust you. You all have different political persuasions, and you're going to go and go in the direction that your constituents elected you to be on this council and as mayor. So I hope people would not vote for any of these recalls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cynthia Wilshire. Cynthia?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here because we have no power, and I watch the meetings religiously, so I'm here to see it in person tonight. I've got just a few comments to make. Sometimes I miss the meetings, and I go to see them on the cable, and I can't find them because they're on at weird times, like five o'clock on Saturday night. I'm making dinner at that time. Ten o'clock in the morning, I'm usually out doing things within the community or running errands. I would like to suggest that maybe you can switch some of these times around. I'm tired of seeing the old reruns of the talent shows and all of that stuff. It's not really germane. I enjoy very much the programs that are broadcast from the Historical Society, learn a lot more about the city that I've lived in for fifty-five years. Really enjoy those. But I'd like to see them, switch the times around. And since the council meetings are at seven-thirty on Monday night every other week, if the weekend between, you couldn't run the meeting from the previous week at that same seven-thirty time, it would help some of us that have bad memories to be able to watch these meetings and maybe encourage people, instead of hunting and pecking, keep them at, you know, in the evening when us ladies or gentlemen are making dinners. People get home from work, and maybe they are happy to sit down and watch council meeting instead of doing their dinner or helping their children with their homework. Morning ones would be good, too. Maybe two or three of each. If you could look at that schedule and maybe see if you could do something to make it more consumer-friendly. I'm on the charter revision board and have been for more than twenty-five years. I understand I cannot speak to you about the committee. We're making some nominations tonight. The people that are on that committee are very well-versed in what's going on in the city. We have a good group of people. We sit down, we have give and take, and we get the job done. And I kind of hate to see the good mix pulled apart and new people put in there, because we've had problems in the past with people that had political agendas. They lasted one or two meetings, and when they found out that the type of things they were requesting could not be put into the charter, they were gone. We need people that are seriously minded and doing what's best for the city, and when we go to that table, we put our political positions aside, and we work together, and we work very well. We have a very well-run committee. So I'm just going to ask you if you could consider just keeping the people that are on there. I know that the list has got a lot of big names in the city, and, but we're doing what we should be doing when the occasion calls us, and it's not broken, so don't try to fix it. I didn't realize you were taking comments about community groups. My friend Judy Baker and I happen to run the quilting group at the Community Center for Seniors. There are a lot of wonderful things going on at the community center for seniors and others. I must admit, we have some people who are not quite seniors, but we don't turn anyone away. We want to encourage people. We bring our own sewing machines and work on our own projects, but we do a lot of community service as well. Every year, we have been doing thirty baby quilts that are sent with the U of M shunt team to Guatemala. Our reward is seeing these babies wrapped in our quilts. A lot of the gals belong to a lot of quilt groups, and we also do quilts for Hemingford Hospital, Gilders, let's see, who else? Ronald McDonald House, Children's Hospital. We have done quilted stockings one year and filled them for a church in Pontiac that desperately needed things for children for Christmas, and we made thirty Christmas socks that went to these children, and we stuffed them. We did a hundred and seventy-five quilted placemats that we're giving to seniors with Meals on Wheels here in Troy one Thanksgiving, so they could have a little bit of charm in their life. So we do a lot of outside charity work, as well as working on our own projects, and we would love to have everybody come. If you're a quilter, every Wednesday, nine to four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Peters?
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, folks, councilpeople of Troy. This might be my last one for a while, although I might stop in on the budget community. First, I'd like to suggest that maybe we incrementally promote solar power in our public buildings, not all at once and a huge cost, but save one or two or three a week that just can't buy, and go for the, not only the city hall, but our schools as well. I'm sure within, you know, a smart faction, you can maybe, you know, we maybe might be able to do that. Also, with our police department, I wouldn't mind seeing a black face or two, or maybe a non-Caucasian. I think we did have one black officer on there, and it's, I don't know, male or female, but have, you know, so. Also, in the private sector, I have heard about CoAmerica as being an example of one of our grooming buildings, so that might be example for somebody here, some other folks in the town. I want to talk about speculators a little bit, violators, hope the government go after maybe the Sherman or Clayton Kind of Trust laws, if that's what they're doing, about price oil, or the Consumer Protection Acts of New York or Illinois. North Korea, I hope the World Court might step in there, the International Court of Justice, where they could settle a dispute. Also, Selfridge Air Force Base, they have a lot of Reagan Democrats, and if the president's interested, he might support keeping that open. Also, recalls. I want to, I have not supported them, however, maybe in particular case like in Wisconsin, where the courts aren't really applying the law, or in the case of, let's say, that election of 2000, where the courts is a controversial election, and in those areas, in particular with this case about Citizens United, in fact, is the court itself becoming a power unto itself instead of supporting the Constitution. Then, in those cases, one might have recall for recourse, the people have no recourse and to have recall. In that particular instance, you know, I might support that, but that would be admired you on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That looks like it concludes the people who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Grechak? Good evening.
Good evening. Evening, Mayor. Sorry you have to put up with this. You're doing a fine job. Keep up the good work. Mr. Peters, the price of oil would come down if we start drilling for oil in this country. Solar is not feasible yet. We need, we need to drill for oil. It's not the speculators, it's, it's the person in the White House. The problem that we have in this country with, with the, is with public sector unions. They don't take the necessary cuts they need to take. Public, the private sector has taken the cuts. Public sector unions don't take the cuts, and it's because of collective bargaining, and it's what, what the unions do with the, with the public officials. They get these people elected, and then they negotiate with these people to get their salaries raised, and then they can't make the cuts. And then we have, then we have politicians that, they draw these huge pensions, and they go from, from city to city, and they collect these pensions up. That, that should be illegal. We got too many people living off the dole, living off the, off the citizens of this country. This country was never founded so that people would live off the government. They were supposed to be private, work, work in the public sector for a few years, and go back out and then work in, work in the, in the, under the private sector, under the laws they pass. And what's happening in this country is we're losing our freedom, and it's just like what's happening in Europe with, with the public, with the unions there, and it's going to happen here. We need to start cutting spending. And the unions in Troy need to cut spending, need to, need to take some pay cuts. And the ten percent, 401K matches are ridiculous. Nobody in this, nobody in the private sector gets a 401K ten percent match. If they get anything, it's probably a three percent or less, not a ten percent. So if we're still getting a ten percent match on our 401Ks for city officials, that needs to stop for public sector unions. So that's, there is room for negotiation, and we need to negotiate those. So, thank you, and you're doing a great job, Mayor Daniels.
Thank you.
We elected you to do a good job in the cut costs, and we'd like to see you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Amy Kalas from Friends of the Rouge. I had emailed you throughout the past couple of weeks. I just wanted to come here on behalf of Troy High School and Smith Middle School, who is in our program, the Rouge Education Project. We go out once a year in May to do sampling on the Rouge River watershed, and we have students at Troy and Smith who are going out this, in the next couple of weeks, actually on May 2nd. on May 2nd. Troy High School will be going out at 8:40 and 9:40 a.m. and you're welcome to go out and join them at their sampling site and say hi. They'll be at the Coolidge and Long Lake intersection. And then Smith Middle School will be going out on May 2nd as well, at 12:15 to 2:00 p.m. in the main sub watershed at Oak Street and Lakeside in Birmingham. Both of these schools have been in our program for a very long time. Troy High School's been in since 1999 and Smith Middle School has been in the program since 2002 and we're celebrating our 25th anniversary this year, so really excited and the kids get to go out in their t-shirts and they get to do a lot of chemical, biological, and physical testing on the water. So they get to do some hands-on science that they can't do every day. And we got some sponsors that go out there and meet with them and explain different things that they can do in the science edge or the science field, whether it be engineering or what I do with a nonprofit. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak this evening? Mr. Collus?
Name on email.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. As a person collecting signatures for the Recall Janice Daniels campaign, the question I am most frequently asked is, why are you doing this? Frankly, I ask myself the same thing, because this is hard work. It would be easier to disengage, to ignore the selfishness of the Tea Party and the radical agenda for this city. But then I have a chance to meet someone. A citizen, a citizen of Troy reaches out to me and lets me know I'm doing the right thing. Take, for example, an email I received from a gentleman named Mike. He writes, telling me that the recall is, quote, "is an important effort, but not all of us who would support you can get to a place to sign the petition. I am bedridden and disabled, but I am a regular voter and I am convinced that Daniels and her ilk will eventually destroy our city." He asked me if I could find a way to collect his signature. So I went to Mike's home. I met his wife. I met his children. I spoke with him and learned, like me, he studied religion and philosophy in college. He opted for a sem, he opted for seminary and a life of service while I chose a more academic path. It was a genuine pleasure to meet him. And when I was canvassing a neighborhood, I met Joe, an 82-year-old widow who was more than happy to sign the petition. She told me of all the volunteer work she has done for the city. She continues to volunteer, working in hospice care, praying with people and spending time with them because she believes no one should die alone. When I'm 82, I hope to be as amazing as her. In meeting both Mike and Joe, I am reminded that I was lucky to have been raised in this city. I'm reminded, too, that this city didn't happen overnight. I'm reminded, it was built by the generations who came before us. It was created by people like Mike and Joe, whom I will never have the pleasure of meeting. It was also created by people like John Zureg, who devoted his time and effort to create a place where families can flourish. But now, this city is facing a choice. Mr. Zureg is leaving us and losing his talent and experience will be felt. This council will have an enormous task in replacing him. So what I would ask this council to choose wisely, choose a candidate with at least a bachelor's degree in public administration, more preferably, a master's degree. Choose a candidate with equivalent years of experience as Mr. Zureg and have at least five years of experience in a community of similar size. This council should seek someone like Mr. Zureg simply to promise Mike and Joe that this government rejects the narrow ideology of the Tea Party and proves that this city cares about the future, cares about families, and cares about the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come up here tonight. Where do I start? Okay, I'll start with Mayor Daniels. Mayor Daniels, I'm going to revert back to a piece of campaign literature that you put out during the campaign. You said, "I believe strongly in the principles of limited government," and you've done that. I congratulate you on that. "I believe that safety is the community's highest order," and you worked for that and I applaud you for that. "I will never threaten the loss of your police, fire, or snow removal services to get a tax increase from you. You've never threatened us and we appreciate that." I work to streamline our budget so that you can understand where your tax dollars are being spent. You've put our books online and we really appreciate that. "I will vote against the irresponsible use of $8.6 from the federal government that is currently over 14 trillion in debt for a transit center that should be built once we have the money to pay for it." And I'm a great believer in pay-as-you-go myself and I congratulate you on that. We cannot, you've also got in your literature, "We cannot borrow debt money from our children." And I agree with that philosophy. We have to pay-as-you-go in this country because one thing about debt, it's always, the note is always gonna come due somewhere down the line. "I believe passionately that our elected officials are servants of the people," and you've demonstrated that and I appreciate that. Because, you know, in America, it's the people who are leaders. Well, right now with this recall campaign, I'm feeling that the people that really got out the 27% or whatever, whether it's the 15 from the year before or whatever was quoted up here, or the 27 that got out, any kind of recall without very, very, very just circumstances, some tremendous violations of the law is a slap in the face to everybody that got out and put their name on a ballot. And I think this is so detrimental to the future history of our country and to the future freedoms of, of the young people that are coming down the line. You also send here, "I have not received one dime from local unions or city government employees who might expect a pro quo or something. All my donations have come from private citizens across the country who believe as I do." But it's time for a new leadership in our sitters, our states, in our states and national level. I am, I am proud of the American citizens who are supporting my campaign. The only thing they expect is adherence to my principles that I guarantee I will give them. And you've given everything and you've been true to everything you promised when you ran for reelection. So anyway, I applaud you on, on these things. Also, philosophizing a little bit, a great man once said that "the mouth is a reflection of the window of one's soul." And there's been a lot of bad things set up at this council meeting about you and sometime about others. And I think that, I think that as citizens of Troy, we have to reflect on solving the problems in this community. We have to work together as brothers and sisters because that's where we're, we're all children of our Heavenly Father. We have to work together and we have to try to make this, continue to make this city a better place to raise families and to meet all the expectations of future generations. I applaud you for your service, although sit behind these, these benches whether I agree with you or not. I'm appreciative of your service and your time. I know you're very underpaid and I applaud you, especially Mayor Daniels, all of the guff that you've put up with. I take it personally when people try to negate an election. It seems to be the, the new tool of certain people in this country, whether it's Scott Walker in Wisconsin or whether it's Governor Snyder in Michigan or you in Troy. It seems if, if I don't like the outcome, I'll leave. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair Searle?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Good evening, Mr. Zureg. Thank you for your service to this city. We appreciate it and I wish you well on your new endeavor. Good luck. What is a bully? The Random House Collegiate Dictionary describes one as "a blistering, quarrelsome, overbearing person who habitually badgers and intimidates." I bring this up because there's a new movie concerning this topic and how it relates to our children and our schools. This seems to be a huge problem, both nationally and locally in schools. Tonight, I see that the usual speakers, who claim to be people of reason, tolerance, and civility, were here again with the usual haranguing of the mayor. Since last November, I have witnessed a constant parade of bullies coming before this council and attempting to attune, intimidate the mayor. They are seemingly led by two previous mayors who are upset by the election results of November. Both of these previous mayors have been before this microphone with numerous mundane accusations. One of them during her tenure as mayor interrupted, berated, and insulted constituents while they were at this microphone. She also tried to censure one former council member when he sent a letter of information to the constituents of this city which she disagreed with. This former mayor is a retired schoolteacher and should know better. At least one holder member, one holdover member from the last city council has displayed hypocrisy in defending one of these former mayors during the last council meeting. He did not comment on the derogatory comments toward you. He selectively offended. During their speeches at this microphone, the persons of reason, tolerance, and civility display constant bullying tactics. They constantly refer to the bad publicity that this city has received. They are the ones who had gone to the press to reveal that this mayor used one word to describe a certain group during a private conversation prior to her deciding to run for office. They are the ones who created this firestorm. They are the ones who continually run to the media with accusations that are not substantiated. They are the ones who are setting a terrible example for our children. I hope they realize that the children today are very intelligent, they observe everything we do, and listen carefully to everything we say. Why should any child listen to a school counselor when their parents and others continually parade before this council and act the way they do? I hope they take this under consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. I have two goals that I'd like to go through. First, a note of appreciation for John Zureg. John, we will miss you. Through several mayors and over 40 council members, you have been the glue and the continuity. You have exhibited professional, intelligent, dedicated, and knowledgeable leadership every day. I haven't always agreed with you, but I have to admit, I'm standing here tonight, most of the time, John was right, I was wrong. And I thank John for his beliefs, for his commitment to the city, and for his performance. We will seriously, seriously miss him. Secondly, I'd like to turn to the recall issue. It's been mentioned by several people tonight. Obviously, I'm a supporter of the recall. There's many things I could talk about, but I'm gonna focus on just one issue tonight and that is the issue that has been put forth by you, the mayor, on many times about we are a free-spending, tax-tax entity. That's just not true. It might sell good with your constituents or to help you get support, but it's not the facts. Using public information, I've analyzed the tax records for the last 10 years in this city. Specifically, to make a point, I looked at my own, I looked at your records, Mayor Daniels, public information, along with those of many of your key supporters, key people on your team. The facts are as follows. Number one, of 25 communities in Oakland County, Troy is among the three lowest in millage rates in, of all the entities. That's not only true now, it's been true throughout the last 10 years. Mayor, Troy's city taxes have actually declined in the last 10 years. Yes, that is right. Lower taxes even with the addition last year of the library millage. How does that compute to your position that it would represent a 27% increase in our taxes? I don't understand. Mayor, in 2011, you wrote a smaller check for the real estate taxes on your home than you wrote in 2002. 10 years of inflation and your taxes were less than they were in 2002. Does that, is that consistent with a free-spending, tax-tax, silly mismanagement of the city? Absolutely not. The facts are what they are. I don't see how you can possibly put forth that kind of an effort. I looked at your other folks. Your campaign manager, over that same 10-year period, has experienced a 10% reduction in his taxes. These are all numbers, that are official numbers, the official records of when you paid your taxes. How can you explain this? Yes, it is true, a couple of members of your team did have some slight increases. They were fortunate enough to own a home that had very nice appreciation, lucky for them, good decision-making for them, but even in those cases, their increase was less than 1% a year, 1/3 to 1/4 of the inflation rate. My taxes have been reduced. There is no taxation creep here, there is no free spending. This city has been well-managed by Mr. Zureg and the people that have sat here before you and I have every hopes that it will be well-managed in the future. But I cannot explain your position on these taxes. In closing, I'll just make one statement. What do I want from a mayor and why am I wearing this badge? I want a mayor who will build our community, one who respects all people, even those who are different than you. I want an ambassador who builds a relationship with the city's half, doesn't tear it down. I want an ambassador that builds a relationship with our business community, isn't at odds with them on everything, with our youth, not fighting with our youth, but building a relationship there. Thus far, I have not seen a single case where you have done that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I saw another hand before mine, that's why I hesitated. Mayor Daniels, City Council, thank you for the privilege of coming before me this evening. Mayor Daniels, in particular, what a positive difference you've made in our, in our city. Thank you. Our city government is now more open and accessible to us. Thank you. You have made outreach to the residents and business community in Troy. And with skill and intelligence, you have put forward many of those community-based proposals for implementation. Thank you. Our library is now open on Saturday. That is something you campaigned about during your election campaign. Thank you. I've seen you going door-to-door, contacting residents, seeking their input for making Troy a better all-around community. Thank you. Mayor Daniels, for your energy, patience, focus, dedication, and for the good job you are doing for the handsome salary of $175 a month. Thank you. Thank you. All of this with a disingenuous recall effort being waged. For those who are leading that effort, say, and I quote, "None of us have ever mounted such a political effort before, so bear with us." Mayor Daniels, you too have never mounted a political effort before. Yet with no honeymoon, you have grown by leaps and bounds in your ability to fulfill the office of the mayor of Troy. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Bernardi? Good evening, Mary Ann.
Good evening. I'm here tonight mainly because I'm being nominated for the Charter Committee. I hadn't really planned in speaking, or I'm on the Charter Committee and wanted to witness, hopefully, a renomination for the next few years as well, I hope. But anyway, I did want to make one short point. When Mr. Coulet was here, speaking, I think I pronounced his name correctly, Coulet, the implication is, well, he described people who are obviously very, very good people, who are supporting his view. And I just wanted to make the point that there are also very, very good people supporting you. The implication that we get many times in writing, I see it in social media, I see it up here at the podium, implication being that the good people are on one side and the bad people are on another side. That's a very destructive, very destructive point of view for any individual to hold, for any government to hold. And I hope that the people of Troy will see that that is happening and really, really take a look at it and realize that a lot of the things that are happening in Troy are destructive. We really need to turn it around. The other gentleman who came up here and gave a list of all the things that he would like to see done in Troy, as he was reading them off, I couldn't help but think to myself, "Oh, I saw her do that. Oh, I saw her do that." So, you know, I've seen you reach out to the youth, I've seen you reach out to diversity to bring us all together, I've seen and heard of so many, so many things. I don't know why you don't bring them out. I've often wondered that, but there's a whole list that you could go through to point to and say, "I have done this, this, and this." I've heard them, I've seen them, I know they're true. And there's one message that I just would like to leave with everyone in Troy, and this is it, that we are not ever going to find people that we agree with 100 percent of the time, or even 50 percent of the time. And if that's what you're looking for, guess what? You're going to be a very lonely person in this world because they're not there. I have found that in my own life. I mean, we've all found that. And I don't know why we've found that truth and yet keep ignoring it. Just because someone does not agree with you does not make them a bad person. Just because someone does not agree with you does not make it impossible for that person to do good in their life, for their community, for their government, for the people that they care about in their lives. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? That concludes public comments. We'll now move to response to public comments, but I'd like to ask the council if they would like to take a short break. Want to do response to, response to public comments first and then take a short break? That's fine with me? Did you have something you wanted to say? No? There are no, there are no responses to public comments, so I guess we'll take a short break. Will we turn in five minutes? Thank you.